You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the March 21st special meeting of the LaPorte County Election Board. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.AccessLaPorteCounty.org.
Good morning or afternoon. We're going to call the meeting of the LaPorte County Election Board to order. It is March 21st, 2025 at 3:00 p.m. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands in our hands, under God, indivisible, and every justice for all.
We'll take roll call. Heather Stevens.
Present.
Teresa Massa.
Here.
And I'm Katie Bowen and also present. So that everyone here is aware, Ms. Massa is sitting in as the proxy for Mr. John Lake today. She has been duly sworn. Thank you. Next item of business is the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Any public comment? Hearing none, we're going to move to the next item on the agenda. Campaign finance hearings. First on the list is the committee to elect Steve Hallowfield.
Guy DiMartino on behalf of Steve Hallowfield.
And Mr. DiMartino, for the record, your client is present with you?
He is.
Thank you. Now, Mr. DiMartino, you filed an appearance on behalf of Mr. Hallowfield.
I do.
You also represent the commissioners of LaPorte County, correct?
I do.
Okay. And in your scope as attorney for the commissioners, do you also represent the election board?
I have not represented the election board. I do not represent the election board.
Thank you.
Mr. Willoughby in the past has represented the election board.
Correct. But Mr. Our, the election board's attorney was appointed by you. Is that correct?
Well, one time because he previously represented you.
We've only used him once.
Then that was Mr. Paycheck.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I thought another issue came up.
So is that how it works, though? If we're in need of representation, is that appointed by the commissioner's attorney?
Or you can go out and retain your own attorney as long as they can go ahead and abide by the fee schedule that we have.
And Mr. DiMartino, there is not any conflict or any prohibition from the Board of Commissioners as a whole to represent a commissioner personally?
I represent the Board of Commissioners. I don't know. I represent Mr. Hallowfield today.
Okay. So there's no prohibition from representing one of the commissioners personally?
At this point in time, no. It's open. There's conflict waived. The county's not doing this. I'm doing this on my own accord.
Thank you. So as you are aware, notice was sent regarding hearing for defects found in the filings of the campaign finance reports, both pre-primary and pre-election. There has been communication between the election board and Mr. Hallowfield regarding both the pre-primary and pre-election and where we found the defects. We have the filed reports before us. All board members should have them. Do you have yours?
Yeah, they're just out of order from the agenda.
Sure.
I will get them in order.
Sure. Thank you. And to date, we have not received any updated filings to correct the defects.
That is correct. It's my understanding, and speaking with Mr. Hallowfield, and he can speak to himself should you need to put him under oath, that there was email correspondence with the election board, and there was a response that was sent to Mr. Hallowfield on February 7th. Mr. Hallowfield never saw that response. And so I could see where there are issues with these reports. We would ask for some additional time to clean up some of the issues that were brought up in the email.
Mr. DiMartino, how much time are you requesting?
Mr. Hallowfield, a week.
Week, yeah.
We do have one specific clarification, if possible, from the email.
Yes.
The email notes that there was a problem with A-13 line item. Is that on the April report or the October report filed stamped?
October.
October.
October. The one filed stamped October 18th.
Okay. And when you're talking about completing all of column B, Mr. Hallowfield was under the impression that if there was only one donation made, that column A was sufficient. But is it the request that all of column B be filled in even if there's only one donation that was made during that period and nothing before that period?
Are you referring to the October filing?
I don't know because I'm looking at the email where there was clarification.
Sure.
And Ms. Van Sickle said something to the effect that all of column B to be completed. And I'm just asking for clarification so he can comply.
So, hold on one second. Let me go to that. So the column, you're correct. The column B only needs to be completed with the year-to-date number. So if someone gave a donation for $250 in column A, then column B would also show year-to-date $250.
Okay.
If they had previously given $100, then the column B would show $350.
$350.
Right, exactly.
We'll get that done.
There is one item that I don't see included in the email specifically. It does say names and totals, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. In the April filing, which was the pre-primary, on the itemized expenditures, the name and mailing address should be completed. Every other page has it.
On the expenditure?
On the expenditures. And then that carries on into the October filing. There's only some names. Most of them, the board could decipher. But there's a few, we just didn't know what the handwriting was. It should be the last page on the expenditures. So if you could add the name and addresses.
So are we talking about Schedule B itemized expenditures?
Yes.
Like where it says building association? You want the address?
Yeah, so, correct. And then lower down on that page, we weren't exactly sure what those names of the entities were that are listed.
You write like a doctor.
So if we could, we could just clear that up.
Seven days.
So there is a request by Mr. Hallowfield for an additional seven days to complete the corrected filings.
I hope that we grant the request.
Can you turn your, oh, it is on.
It is now.
So there's a motion by Ms. Massa to grant the request for an additional seven days to file both updated filings for pre-primary and pre-election in 2024. Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Hallowfield, did you, you spoke with Katie? Did you?
No, I did not. I didn't see that email until today with her information. I sent my information to Taylor to pass it on.
February.
I believe so.
I think, I think it was January, and then there was a response in February, but he didn't see the email until I made him search everything today. He didn't see the 2-7 email back to him. Either it was caught somewhere and, so I said, I want you to search everything, and we found that email.
Okay. But you're here every day. You didn't walk over and say, hey, what's going on?
They didn't walk over and see me either.
That's not, that's not our responsibility.
Mr. Hallowfield, the board's responsibility is to investigate and review the reports that are filed and bring any defects or concerns to the candidate, which is what the board did directly.
That did happen. Mr. Hallowfield apologizes. It was inadvertent.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay. The motion before us is made by Ms. Massa to grant an additional seven days for Mr. Hallowfield to file the corrected reports. Is there a second? I will second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As this is set for hearing pursuant to notice that was sent out by the election board, I would also motion that this matter be continued over so that we, the board, have the opportunity to review the corrected reports, and we will add it to the agenda to finalize this open notice of hearing on the next meeting date. Any discussion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Mr. DiMartino, would you like to have us select a date in April now that your schedule allows you to be present, or would you like us to contact you to schedule the next date?
If you leave the scheduling to me, it's not going to go well.
Great. So how about if we?
How about if I have my office contact your staff and get some?
That works. That works.
That way John can be involved as well in his scheduling.
Correct. Yes. So the date will be to be scheduled by attorneys in the board collectively.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Hallowfield, thank you for coming. All right. Next item on the agenda is the committee to elect Joey Winsky. I believe we have an attorney appearance on file as well. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. DiMartino, would you?
Guy DiMartino on behalf of Joey Winsky, and Joey Winsky is here present in person.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Ms. Winsky. Additionally, we have a notice that was sent for hearing for today. Notice previously sent regarding defects in pre-primary and pre-election filings. There was an update filed for one of the 2024 filings, and we still have one outstanding. Communication did occur between Ms. Winsky and the clerk's office. My phone number was provided to Ms. Winsky, and Ms. Winsky and I were able to discuss on the phone the concerns that the board found in the filings. We did not receive an updated pre-election filing.
You'll have to ask the question when the time comes. She's talking. You're not waiting for, you're still.
Do you have any comment?
I do have a comment.
Sure.
It's more of a question.
Yes.
And I don't intend at all to be adversarial. Please, may I approach?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
Yes.
I guess I'm looking for some clarification regarding procedure. The notice of a hearing says that this notice is pursuant to Indiana Code 394-15. If we pull Indiana Code 3-9-415, it seems to be a delegatory statute. When you look at the statute, the statute says, "A member of the commission, the co-directors with the authorization of the commission, or a member of the county election board, may conduct a hearing or an investigation, take evidence, and report back to the commission or board for its consideration and action." So when you look at the statute, to me, it seems to be investigatory in nature, where you could get information and take or delegate one person or more. And then there's like a fact-finding that comes back to the board, and then the board at some other time makes some type of ruling or understanding. So I guess when I see this notice of hearing, it appears to be, for lack of a better term, a final notice of hearing as opposed to a fact-finding or gathering evidence. So I guess I'm trying to understand from the board how, what are we doing today, and what can we answer in order to get this matter resolved one way or another?
First, statute requires the board to investigate and audit all reports that are filed.
Correct.
Which we had done. At that time, the board sent out notices asking for candidates that had defects to correct the defects without a notice of hearing. At the last meeting, we went through the individuals that had not responded to the notice to correct defects with a motion for a notice of hearing to be sent. Now, this statute does indicate a hearing, which there's not any other reasonable way for the board to conduct a hearing besides at a public hearing. We only investigate the reports that are given to us, address with one another the reports that we believe have defects, and bring that to the candidate. At that time, if we don't get a response, or if we don't have a conversation with the candidate where perhaps the board made a mistake, or it can easily be cleared up with a new filing, lack of response or a lack of a defect brings us here to the point of the hearing. So you are right that there's a procedural process that happens, but in order to maintain open meetings, we also conduct the hearing here as well.
But how do you reconcile that, just from my understanding, with and report back to the commission or to board for its consideration and action?
We are reporting here for consideration and action.
So you are hearing it and reporting to yourselves at any given moment after whatever we do?
We're having the opportunity to bring action by making a motion and discussing openly here after there's any additional evidence brought before us that we did not already receive.
So this is an evidentiary hearing?
Well, yes. We're asking to take evidence. So pursuant to the words of the statute, we are seeking additional evidence. If there is not a reason to file an additional report or correct a defect, we would like to know that.
Okay. Do you have any specific questions for Ms. Winsky?
Ms. Winsky, on your October 17th, 2024, filed-stamped, pre-election report, it shows in the contributions column under 15B, an unitemized number of $16,774. When reporting that, does that mean that you did not receive any one contribution totaling that number over $100 from one individual donor?
No, all the checks I received were under $100.
And all of those checks were deposited into the bank account that is included in your campaign finance report information?
Yes.
Okay. There's also, in Schedule A-1, the contributions by individual, an anonymous donation in the amount of $320. Completion of the campaign finance reports includes the requirement of the contributor's full name, occupation, full mailing address. This says anonymous.
Because the individual did not want me to release his name.
Mr. DiMartino, can we put Ms. Winsky under oath?
Your, yes.
Okay. Can you please raise your right hand? Heather, do you want to swear her in?
You do, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Okay. So you've indicated that the person that donated $320 that you received on July 17th, 2024, is listed as anonymous because that person does not wish for their name to be revealed?
Correct.
But you know the name of the person?
I do know the name of the person. I did not know the name of the person the night of my fundraiser, but I found out later.
Okay. And when you run your fundraiser, do you keep track of everyone that gives you a donation?
They, I reported it on my deposit slip, but that deposit slip is not available. I, let me clarify that because I reported the checks on there. The cash, I did it as one lump sum.
And was there a suggested cost for an individual to attend your fundraiser?
No. There was not.
Was this one fundraiser held in April?
Um, I can't remember that. I don't remember if it was April or July.
Okay. Now, there are other candidate filings, one in particular, that indicated an expense to your committee that is greater than $100. It's listed in a specific candidate's expenditures in the filing that that candidate filed. Is it possible that you received over $100 from any one donor, and that this form needs to be corrected?
Well, I would have to have that person come forward because I do not have that information. Every, every check that I received that I know of, I put on the back of my deposit slip, and I don't recall anyone having over, my, my daughter's my treasurer, and I do not remember anybody else over that. If, I would be happy to amend this report if that person will tell me that who it is. I mean, I'm not trying to hide anything.
Ms. Winsky, $16,000 is a lot of unitemized.
Lot of cash.
It's a lot. And where, how many people attended this fundraiser?
Probably 100.
And where was it held?
Or maybe more. I didn't count.
Where was the fundraiser held?
At Bricks Tavern, or Bricks, whatever that's called.
May I ask, how do you know that if you lumped all the cash donations together, how do you know that none of them came from any one person more than $100 or not?
I don't know. I, I just know that that's what, the amount of cash, and then I had checks. I didn't get a lot of checks, I have to tell you that. A lot of people came in with cash.
And do you understand you're required to track that? Donations?
I have never, I've, I've, I've had many, many campaigns, and I've, I've always done it this way. And I never had anyone tell me that if they gave me more than $100, well, whatever they gave me in cash, that I had to write that down. I've never had anybody, never been called before this board, before this last year.
Ms. Winsky, are you, are you familiar with the campaign finance rules?
Yes, but I've never, I've never seen, and maybe if you want to point that out to me, you can, but I, I don't ever remember anything saying that you have to report cash over $100.
You, you absolutely have to report everything. Anything over $100 is to be reported. Cash, check, in-kind donations, anything.
And it does explain that at the top of the CFA 4.
Thank you.
So as we stand, sit here today, do you have any records from the fundraiser that show what your donations amounted to per individual or per entity?
After you and I talked, I contacted the bank. I looked through my online banking, and they have no records, and I could not find them on, I, if you asked me where my signs were, I have sign locations. I did not keep track of every single donation except for the ones that I reported on here.
That is exactly what campaign finance laws are for.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
No.
Any additional questions?
No.
Mr. DiMartino, do you have any additional comments? What is the board's pleasure?
I, I'm not familiar with what the usual procedure has been from this point out.
I don't know that anything about this is usual.
No. We don't, we didn't have a usual procedure, as Ms. Winsky indicated. For the years that she has been a candidate or running for office, no one has ever called her in or looked at her report, to the best of her knowledge. And in the last several years, that process did start. The election board takes the responsibility given to it by the state seriously, and we investigate every report that is filed and ask questions or audit or investigate to the best of our abilities with the resources that we have available to us. Right now, what we have before us is a candidate who is indicating she can neither produce records to update their campaign finance report based on the information she has available to her today, and it's very possible that these cash donations were exceeding the amount required by the Indiana Election Code. We had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Winsky prior to today when we sent the notice of defective report, and an opportunity for the defective report to be corrected. We're now here for a notice of hearing. The, as many of you probably know, the election board rules allow us to assess a fine against a candidate or a committee for late filing or just failure to file. What we have right now is a candidate who likely violated the campaign finance rules, which may or may not be a penalty that is accessible to the election board before us. So I think we have to have a bit of discussion here.
I would agree. I think that, I think that at this point, I would like to table this.
Say something else.
Until we can have a better understanding of what our options are.
Okay. Any discussion or comment?
I agree.
Okay, so, am I correct that the motion... You're making a motion to table this matter?
Correct.
And with that tabling, we would give Mr. DiMartino and his office adequate notice of any time this would be coming back before?
Correct.
The board? Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
I would second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. DiMartino, we will table and review further the election code and the board's ability here, and be in contact with you and your office.
And so, if you are going to prepare another notice of hearing, is it going to be on the same basis as 3-9-4-14A2B? Or are you...
We know.
Please let me continue. I just want to set a record, if that's okay.
Yes.
Or if there's some other issue, is that going to be plainly stated in the notice, so we understand what we're coming into?
If there is a different issue being brought, the notice would be duly served upon both... upon you, since you filed your appearance, with any time limit prescribed in the statute.
Thank you.
With a specific statutory section delineated.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Winski. Thank you, Mr. DiMartino.
Thank you.
We have the Committee to Elect Mike Bohacek. Mr. Bohacek's committee received a notice of a defect. The committee then filed a corrected filing, which the board was able to review. I'm going to make a motion to dismiss the notice that was scheduling the hearing, and deem this matter resolved based on the corrected filing. Is there a second?
I'll second. If you were satisfied, I'm satisfied.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have the Committee to Elect Joe Smith. This is added to the agenda because the committee's name was read into the record during the last meeting erroneously. I have a list of all 84 campaign finance committees that filed in 2024, and this is not the right name. So I apologize to the Committee to Elect Joe Smith, as your report was, in fact, not final. It was simply your annual report. So the committee has been notified to disregard, but I wanted to make that publicly clear as well. Committee to Elect Al Ott is next on the list. The committee received due notice of defect in the final report. The committee contacted the clerk's office, who in turn provided my phone number to the committee. I spoke to both Mr. Ott, as well as his treasurer. The treasurer provided an email response to the board for the board to review prior to today's meeting. The communication and response were completed within the time period prescribed in the notice that was sent to the Committee to Elect Al Ott. And again, I'm going to make the same motion as a motion in the previous for the matter to be deemed dismissed, the notice of hearing to be considered resolved based on the conversations and information provided to the board in the five-day period.
I will so move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. LP County for Young Dems. Same apology goes out to the LP County for Young Dems. There is not actually the final report filed at this time. So LP County Young Dems do not have to appear. Their notice is withdrawn by the board. This was a board error, and not an error of the LP County Young Dems. So my apology on behalf of the board. Marty Corley for MCAAS.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mr. Corley, before you introduce yourself, for the board's knowledge, and as we all try to find the paperwork, we're moving into individuals that received a notice for not having filed their annual report. I'll give you a minute to make sure that you have the documentation before you.
Definitely.
Everyone good?
I am capable.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Marty Corley.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we have a notice showing that on... Ms. Van Sickle?
So I sent out notice December 2nd. Then, the day of, I sent an email at 12:05 PM, and then he sent it to me shortly after that.
Okay. When you say December 2nd, on 12/2/2024, is that the date you're referencing?
Yes.
And you sent a notice?
To all candidates that they needed to file a campaign finance annual report by January 15th at noon.
Okay. And then, on January 15th at 12:05 PM, you sent a follow-up reminder email to any committee that had not yet filed their annual report, reminding them to file the annual report?
Correct.
Does the board wish that I make a motion to enter both exhibits into the record?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Both the 12/2/24 and 1/15/25 notices will be entered into the record. Okay. Mr. Corley, I have before me your annual report, which was filed on January 16, 2025, at 8:30 AM.
January...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. His is the 15th.
Mine was January 15th.
January 15, 2025, at 3:27 PM. Does that sound right?
Actually, I sent it, I think, a little bit around 2:25.
Okay.
That's why my email has a timestamp to it.
Okay. Now, the annual reports were due January 15, 2025, at 12:00 PM. This annual report came in approximately two-plus hours after the deadline. The election code allows the board to assess a fine, which would be $50 per calendar day, which begins with 12:01 on the day of filing. Is there any discussion or motion of the board?
This is not the comfortable stuff. This is not the fun stuff. Teresa and I went through this quite a bit last year, and I will say, we kept it fair all the way through. So I think in keeping with that, I think I'd... Do you have anything, Teresa?
I'm trying to remember. I think for the day of, that we waived the fines? No?
We didn't. We did not. That was...
I'll get an opportunity to say anything?
Sure.
Any other comment by the board?
No.
Okay. Mr. Corley, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Please.
I just... Time slipped, that's it. I do have a full-time job that just got, kind of got encompassed in that day. It was on my agenda to actually email it. It was prepared, it was ready. I just... Time slipped, and then when I saw the reminder, I happened to be in my car, and I immediately went to the first computer I could get to, to get on my OneDrive, to make sure I sent it to Ms. Van Sickle. So again, nothing... I didn't intentionally... I tried to avoid the deadline, it just time slipped, so... January tends to be a busy time in my field sometimes, over, you know, starting the new year, so...
Right. And, Mr. Corley, you did receive the notice of hearing on March 5th to appear today?
Yes.
I move to enter into the record that notice of hearing as well. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. What is the board's desire?
Can I clarify? Taylor, do you remember, last year, we did not reduce for the day of? Is that correct?
We did not.
Okay. Okay, then, I'm sorry, Mr. Corley. I appreciate you and what you do very, very much, but we just want to keep things fair. So I would make the motion to assess a $50 fine.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
No.
No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's all right.
The board has approved a $50 fine to be assessed against Marty Corley for MCA. We will send formal notice to you as well, Mr. Corley.
Let's pay at the clerk's office?
Yeah, you'll get a notice with instructions.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for coming today.
Yeah, no problem, thank you.
Appreciate it. Monica Beatty for the Port School Board.
Good afternoon.
Would you please state your name?
My name is Monica Beatty.
I apologize, I pronounced your name wrong.
That's okay.
For purposes of today's hearing, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Does everyone have the correct documents in front of them?
Yes.
Yes.
I will try not to make that same mistake again. Okay, so, for purposes of the record, Ms. Van Sickle, did you send a notice to the committee December 2nd of 2024, reminding of the requirement to file an annual report?
Yes.
And subsequently, on January 15, 2025, at 12:05 PM, did you send an additional email reminding of the late notice?
Correct.
For filing? Okay. And on March 5, 2025, did you also send a notice of hearing to the committee to appear today?
So it was mailed March 5, and then emailed March 6, but yes.
Thank you for the clarification. I move to enter all three notices into the record.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I have before me the committee's annual report, which is stamped, received as of January 16, 2025, at 8:30 AM. Any questions of the board?
No.
Okay. Do you have any comments to make to the board?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I know that there's a fine assessed, and I think I actually mentioned it to Taylor in my email, so, no.
Okay. So based on... Based on the prescribed statute, this is considered a one day late, as it tolls from January 15 at 12:01, and this was received January 16 at 8:30 AM. What is the board's pleasure?
I would move to assess a $50 fine.
I would second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. The committee will be assessed a $50 fine. We will send notice to you regarding the fine that has been assessed, so you have formal documentation and can move forward with payment.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming today, we appreciate it.
No problem.
Committee to Elect Mike Yaculow. Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Van Sickle, I'm going to ask you the same questions for all the candidates. Did you send the Committee to Elect Mike Yaculow a reminder notice on December 2nd, 2024, to file the annual report by January 15 of 2025?
Yes.
And did you also send to the same committee a notice on January 15, 2025, at 12:05 PM, that the filing had not yet been received?
Yes, and then I also sent one, a delinquency letter, on January 16 at 11:12 AM as well.
And lastly, did you also send the notice of hearing on March 5 through USPS First Class Mail, and emailed on March 6, 2025?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Would you please state your name for the record?
Mike Yaculow.
Thank you for coming today. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. The board has before us an annual report that has been filed as of January 16, 2025, time stamped at 11:45 AM. Do all board members have that in front of them?
Yes.
Are there any questions of the board for Mr. Yaculow?
No.
Okay. Mr. Yaculow, do you have any comments or questions for the board?
Sure. Yeah, similar to Mr. Corley, I kind of let time get away from me. The only thing I could think of, I was dealing with some health issues in the month of December, and a little bit in January. I was looking at my account, I did four doctor's appointments in December, and two in January, but maybe not an excuse, so if I'm assessed a fine, I can accept that, and certainly apologize to the board and the office for not having that done sooner.
What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make the motion to assess the $50 fine.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yaculow, we'll send you the formal notice as the others, and it will have information about how to pay the penalty that's been assessed.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you. Committee to Elect Tucker King.
How are you guys doing today?
Well, thank you. Can you please state your name?
Tucker King.
Thank you.
That's better.
Ms. Van Sickle, same questions as previously asked of you. Did you send to... Looking for the committee name. Hold on one second. To the Committee to Elect Tucker King, a reminder notice on December 2nd, 2024, to file the annual report?
Yes.
And on January 15, 2025, at approximately 12:05 PM, did you also send a reminder email to the same committee that the report had not yet been filed?
Correct. And then I also sent one, January 16, 2025, at 11:11 AM.
And finally, did you send a notice of hearing for today's date to the same committee through mail on March 5, 2025, and email on March 6, 2025?
Correct.
Thank you. I make a motion to... I make a motion to enter into the record all four notices that we just addressed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Tucker, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so I have before me, as well as the other board members, an annual report that has been filed. The filing date is February 4th, 2025, timestamped at 3:25 PM. Any questions of the board? No.
No.
Okay. Mr. Tucker, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to make to the board?
Yeah, so I know that, as everyone else has come before me, January was very rough on me and my family. We had a lot of illness. We went from COVID to flu to flu, you know? So I did bring a doctor's note from that time period, as well as my timesheet to show that I was not at work for a large period of that. So I missed the notification, and I know that it's my fault. So it should have been something I filed ahead of time, and I just, it was not a great time for me. So I am asking for some clemency in this situation, but I understand that whatever is given to me, I will pay for, so.
I have a follow-up question. Ms. Van Sickle, the notices that were sent in January, on January 15th and January 16th, were they sent by email or mail?
Those were sent by email.
Okay.
The January 15th.
Mr. Tucker, what email address are we emailing to?
My work email, so that's partially why I missed it, and I apologize for that.
Were you out of work in those days in January?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I can provide my time cards and everything. If that's, if you want me to approach, I can hand you them. I only made one copy, though. I apologize.
Sure, you can approach.
Okay. So here's the doctor's note, actually, the 15th, and then here's my time card for that time period, 15th this year. It says vacation time. I was just using my vacation time because our sick time rolls over in that time period.
Right.
Yeah. So here.
Okay, stay here for one second.
You're good.
Okay, so for 15th is here?
Seven vacation.
Seven vacation, okay, and then seven vacation, seven vacation?
Yes.
Okay, so those are all vacation?
Yeah, and then we have a holiday the following week.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so I.
And that's January?
That's in January. I know that I didn't send it until February. There was a lot going on. I guess I sat here, and yeah, so it's my mistake. I was playing a lot of catch-up at that time, and this just felt weird for me.
On the timesheet, when there is a line?
That's a weekend.
Uh-huh, that's a weekend. Of course it is. Thank you. Two days, that would make sense. Okay. For privacy reasons, I am not going to ask that either the medical record or your payroll records be entered into the record, though I'm going to share with the board for them to review here.
Okay.
Okay?
I appreciate that.
Yes, absolutely. If you could give us just a few minutes while you're here, in case anyone else has another question.
I do have a quick question for Taylor. You sent out the reminders in December, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and did you receive that by mail?
I cannot remember at this time, probably. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I know. It's not a great excuse. I know. I just.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does the board have any additional questions for Mr. King?
No.
No.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure?
Last year, we were, we did assess and reduce fines. We reduced those $1,000 fines to $200. I think that I would be, we can't do the $200, because I think we have to move forward a little bit. But I think I would be, now, I don't want to say comfortable, because that's not it. Things happen, and I do understand that. My motion is going to be to assess a fine of $1,000 and reduce it to 400.
Okay, let's break that up into two separate motions, because we have to assess the penalty first, and then the board has to waive or reduce the penalty in a separate motion. So as the motion is on the table.
It would be to assess a $1,000 fine. That would be the motion.
And for discussion purposes, the due date for filing was January 15th of 2025. It was filed on February 4th at 3:25 PM, so this is 21 days. The statute allows for $50 a day, a max up to $1,000, which is where you're getting your $1,000 from?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
Before we do that, I would like to be reminded of which votes must be unanimous.
To reduce it must be unanimous.
It's a majority vote for the assessment of the penalty and a unanimous vote for a reduction. So the motion is to assess at $1,000. Is there a second? I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion carries by majority vote. Is there any additional motion?
I would like to make the motion to reduce the penalty to $400 from the 1,000.
Any discussion?
Still seems excessive to me.
I know, but we went 200 last year, and we have to go forward. We can't leave it the same. So that's where I'm, it's where my brain's working.
Did you come up with 400 in any way?
Because I doubled what we did last year. Last year, if it was at the 1,000, we reduced it to 200.
But why wouldn't that be the expectation for candidates?
Because we said we're not going to continue to reduce these. So I'm throwing a bone here.
Okay. So the motion is for the penalty to be reduced from $1,000 to $400. There's not any other motion, so is there a second for that motion? I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Or else it stays at a thousand.
I know. I know.
That's why I voted aye.
Well, I appreciate it anyways. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Mr. King, you'll receive formal notice of today's findings, and just as everyone else, there will be information for payment details.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You guys have a wonderful day.
If you want to update your email address.
I fully intend to.
So that we're not emailing your work email address, would you please reach out so that we can update and give you the paperwork to update appropriately?
Yeah, that would be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, last committee is Committee to elect Camille Meriwether. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay. Do all board members have Ms. Meriwether paperwork, committee's paperwork, in front of them?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, same questions for Ms. Van Sickle. On December 2nd, 2024, did you send a notice to this committee regarding the filing deadline for annual reports being January 15th, 2025?
Yes.
How is that notice sent?
By mail.
And on January 15th, at approximately 12:05 PM, did you send an email reminding this committee that the annual report had not been received as of that time?
Correct.
Did you send any subsequent email on January 16th?
I did, January, I've provided all of the documentation, but we've kind of emailed back and forth. She emailed me back on January 15th. I responded on January 16th. And then I emailed her again on January 16th with a delinquency notice. Going through the documentation, she had stated that it was incorrect, and she did submit her last report, but the report is documented for 4/12/24 through 10/18/24 and marked pre-primary without a file stamp. I also don't have record of that report, but she didn't, she wasn't on the ballot for the general. So if they weren't on the ballot, they could file for the annual. They didn't have to. She withdrew prior to, so. But we had gone back and forth, and she had sent me again basically the same report, which wasn't dated through 12/31, which the annual report should be dated through 12/31 of '24.
Okay. On March 5th, 2025, did you send via USPS First Class Mail a notice of hearing for today's date?
Correct, and then it was emailed on March 6th.
Thank you. That was my next question. I make a motion for all such notices to be entered into the record.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Would you please state your name for the record?
Camille Meriwether.
Thank you, and would you raise your right hand? Do you, why am I drawing the blank? Oh, my goodness, there's too much going on. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Meriwether, have you filed a final 2024 report yet?
Yes, I thought that was the report that I filed in October, because I disbanded the committee.
Okay.
So I thought I was done with it after that.
And I just want to clarify some of the statements that Ms. Van Sickle made. Were you on the ballot for the general election?
Yes.
You were? Okay.
No.
No?
No.
The November election?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, so you were on the ballot for the primary election in the spring?
Hmm, no. I don't know how that transferred. I was somewhere in transition there.
Okay.
But withdrew in July, so.
Okay. So the board has received a report that is dated April 12th, 2024, through October 18th, 2024. The report indicates that there are zero contributions, as well as zero expenditures, and zero cash on hand for the committee. The report type was checked as pre-primary, and it appears that in emails with Ms. Van Sickle, the report was again produced with the same dates marked as final, but there's not a report that goes through the end of December of 2024 with a final date of December 31, 2024. Is that right?
Correct, because I thought that October, since I disbanded and withdrew, that that would be my final report, since I was no longer the committee.
Okay. And did you receive any additional contributions or make any expenditures from this committee between October 18th, 2024, through December 31st, 2024?
No.
Okay, and it appears that there is a lot of correspondence between you and Ms. Van Sickle in an attempt to understand
Stuck with it.
the process or the paperwork.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions of the board?
Did you happen to have any conversations with Ms. Van Sickle, or was it just emails?
Just through emails.
I see.
So from what I gather, you were maybe having a bit of trouble understanding how the campaign finance portion of a campaign works, correct?
Yes.
Okay, did you reach out to your party leadership at all, or another candidate?
No. With the party, with the way I had to dis- withdraw, it wasn't, I didn't feel I had anybody to reach out to.
Okay, okay. Do you have any comments or questions for the board?
No. Well, I guess just that, from my understanding, so I was still, even though it was disbanded and I withdrew, I was still supposed to file through December. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, because the report, on the first page of the report, there is a box to check indicating final disbands committee.
Okay.
It's right under the box that you checked for pre-primary, and that final report would go through the end of the calendar year, so 12/31/24.
So it's just a box that wasn't checked? Because I thought I checked the disband, and that's what I was trying to tell her. I don't know if it transferred well with me scanning it, but I thought I marked that box.
The date on that report that you sent back in is only through October 18th, so it didn't close out the calendar year to show that there weren't any additional contributions or expenditures made. Would you be willing to complete that final report so that the report accurately shows that your intention is to disband the committee?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions of the board?
No.
No.
And what is the board's pleasure?
Do we want to table this until we receive the final filing, disbanding? Or is that not a good idea?
Interesting.
Yeah.
Regardless of when we receive the final report, we are at March 21st, well beyond the $1,000, $50 per day fine. So the way I understand both the code and the process, the board at this juncture would have the ability to assess the penalty, and subsequently, the board can entertain a motion to reduce or waive the penalty with conditions or not.
Well, I think what I would like to do is I'm going to make the motion to assess the penalty of $1,000, and then I'm going to throw this one to Teresa.
Okay, so let's start there, because I feel as though the next step is that there's going to be a secondary motion filed, so we have to start with the penalty motion. The motion to assess the fine at $1,000 is on the table. Is there a second?
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a subsequent motion?
I would move to reduce the fine to $400 to be effective upon the date that Ms. Meriwether files in a form that meets all of the requirements, the paperwork to disband the committee.
Would we like, should we put a timeline on that for that committee to, for that paperwork to be filed, whether she chooses, whether you choose to disband or keep it open? Something tells me you're going to disband. But, yeah.
Is two weeks reasonable?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Is it reasonable to the rest of you? Then I would amend my motion.
Yes.
Okay, yes, to add that two-week deadline.
Okay, so the motion before us is to reduce the $1,000 penalty to $400 along with the filing of the final report, disbanding the committee, if the committee so chooses,
Okay.
on or before April
Fourth?
Fourth, Friday, April 4th, at 4:00 PM in the clerk's office. And did you have any other stay on the penalty based on the filing?
We should stay the, I would request that we stay the $1,000 penalty. We should stay the, I would request that we stay the $1,000 penalty until April 4th.
Okay.
At which time we anticipate it will be reduced pursuant to this motion.
Okay.
Wait, walk me through this one.
So we're not going to collect the $1,000 penalty until April 4th?
And as long as she comes in on or before April 4th, then we accept the $400 reduced penalty?
When you say comes in, we mean files to disband. And I'm sure Ms. Van Sickle will be so happy to assist you if you have any questions about how to file that.
Okay.
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 Any further discussion?
No.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Ms. Meriwether, we will provide you paperwork of the decision made today. If it is your intention to disband the committee, please feel free to reach out to Ms. Van Sickle or myself. We will provide you with the form again. If you want to stay here, I'll show you on the form, the box that has to be appropriately checked, and if your intention is to still disband the committee, that final document needs to be filed in the clerk's office before April 4th at 4:00 p.m. They close at 4:00 p.m., so I suggest you get there a little bit early, so they're not closing the window on you.
Okay.
Okay?
Gotcha.
Thank you for coming today. Board member comments?
Good to see you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Other than that, this part is never comfortable, but it's part of the job, so with that, have a good weekend.
And we do strive to be consistent. I hope that that is coming through, and I want to wish everyone a happy Women's History Month.
Thank you for joining us today, Teresa, we appreciate it. As Heather mentioned, this is probably the crummiest part of sitting up here on the election board and having to assess penalties or fines from people that we want to continue to represent us publicly. We have talked about this before, and I hope to continue allowing the board to educate candidates that are interested in running for office, on how to correctly complete these forms, when to turn them in, and be of assistance as best we can, so that we don't have to continue having year after year penalties assessed and people not really understanding the process or understanding how to move forward with their committee as they wish. So with that said, thank you, everyone, for coming, have a wonderful weekend, and we will see you next time.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.